Shall we stand for the Lord's Prayer, please? Our Father who art in heaven, I will be thy name. Thy kingdom comes, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses, that we have done for trespass against us. But deliver us from evil, for I am his kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I'm calling this meeting to order at five thirty-one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chapman, will you call the order please?
Gallagher.
Here.
Messina.
Here.
Jacoby.
Crawford.
Here.
Here, sir.
Langner.
Here.
Coulson.
Here.
Is there a motion that could approve the consent agenda?
Some minute.
Second?
Second.
I would ask for the motion to be split in half, the approval of minutes versus the approval of expenditures. There's an expense that involves my spouse, and I don't want, I would like to approve that without my vote. Does that make sense? I'm asking for us to approve the minutes first, and then allow me to abstain from the approval of the expenditures.
The college or training or something?
It's a reimbursement, but it's an expense, and I don't want to put my name approving.
Did right, did right, yes.
So would that be?
I'll second that.
Would it be Linda updating her motion?
Yes, I'll under.
Okay, and I'll second the updating motion.
Right.
Okay, and I have a correction to the January third minutes. After the paragraph after consent agenda, strike that sentence that starts with Alderman woman Messina. Made a motion to accept the resignation of Alderman James Page. Alderman Jacoby seconded the motion, because that's on the December sixteenth minutes.
Yeah, we need to, we need to vote first on the minutes from the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended. Gallagher.
Yes.
Messina.
Yes.
Jacoby.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Here.
Langner.
Yes.
Coulson.
Yes.
And we need to vote on the second part of the agenda, the expenses.
Vote on the second.
So we need a motion.
So I'll just, I'll just make a motion to approve the expenditures for this meeting.
Any discussion?
We need a second.
Second.
Yes.
Okay.
We met on Friday, January third, because of the storm that was coming in. So the expenses that were approved that evening were through January sixth. So the expense approval that we have in front of us is for January fourth through January twenty-first. So we need to strike some of these expenditures from this list, and they are as follows. Fund one hundred, the first three items, sixteen thousand ninety-eight oh five. Department three hundred, the first two items, twenty-nine seventeen eighty-two, one thousand thirty-six eighty-four. Second page. Department four hundred, first two items, forty-four dollars to sixty-two fifty. Third page, department five hundred, the first item, eighty dollars. Department six hundred, the first five, fifty-nine ninety-eight, sixty-nine ninety-eight, seventy-eight hundred thirty-three eighty-nine, three thousand eighty thirty-eight. And then there's one more. Page five. Department six thirty parks, the seventy-five forty. So, general fund bills in the amount of, if you go to your agenda for tonight's meeting, is forty-four thousand five hundred thirty dollars and eighty-four cents. And capital improvements fund bills is seventeen thousand eight twenty-five, eight hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents, for a total of all accounts of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
A motion is up there.
Okay, what was that you said? Changes you can hear the next.
Who seconded?
It was Tom.
That Tom seconded.
Do you all accept the amendment?
Yes.
To your motion?
Yes.
As amended, as amended.
Any more discussion? Chapman, call the order, please.
Gallagher.
Abstain due to family delinquency.
Messina.
Yes.
Jacoby.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langner.
Yes.
Coulson.
Yes.
Okay. Every once in a while, it gives me great pleasure having somebody get a proclamation. I'm now turning this thing over to the fire chief, Mr. Canuson, to read the proclamation and deliver it, to give it to the person who deeply deserves it after twenty years of putting up with us here on the board. Okay, Mr. Canuson?
Captain Walker, would you kind of present yourself up here so everybody can take a look at you? So, first of all, just a few words. I want to, certainly want to thank Captain Mark Walker for twenty years of service. I think it's hard enough to have, to do twenty years at one job as a full-time, you know, person, but to dedicate twenty years in a part-time role, which means, you know, he's got a full-time job and this is, and he's maintained that part-time service for over twenty years, and that's certainly so, certainly shows his dedication to the citizens of Pleasant Valley. So we really want to recognize him and appreciate him for that. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation on behalf of the mayor and the board of Alderman. It is as follows. Proclamation for Captain, for Captain Mark Walker. Whereas Captain Mark Walker has honorably served the city of Pleasant Valley, Missouri, since March third, two thousand and four, demonstrating exceptional dedication, bravery, and leadership. And whereas for over twenty years, Captain Mark Walker has consistently displayed unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of the community, responding to countless emergencies with professionalism and compassion. And whereas Mark Walker was promoted to captain in two thousand and six and has mentored and inspired numerous firefighters, fostering cultural excellence, teamwork, and commitment. And whereas Captain Mark Walker's contribution to the Pleasant Valley Fire Department have left an indelible mark, and his leadership will be greatly missed by his colleagues and the community alike. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city of Pleasant Valley and the Pleasant Valley Fire Department, do hereby recognize Captain Mark Walker for his twenty years of outstanding service, dedication, and sacrifice in protecting the lives and property of our citizens. Further, we extend our heartfelt gratitude and best wishes to Captain Walker on his future endeavors. Passed to approve this day, twenty-first day of January, twenty twenty-five.
First of all, I want to thank my wife and my kids and my granddaughter for coming. My wife Sandy, my son Brandon, his wife Allison, granddaughter Michaela, son Dylan, my daughter Aubrey, and her husband Chance. Thank you for breaking the cold. You know, Pleasant Valley gave me my start. They put me through training. I didn't, I finally took it out what I wanted to be when I grew up at thirty-eight. And I learned what a true family outside my family was. And, you know, it, it was a pleasure. It was, learned a lot, worked with a lot of great people. It was, it was a good run. But now that I'm, I'm, for those that you don't know, I'm fire marshal at Grandview. That takes a lot of my time, plus got the kids and the grandkids coming. So I'm kind of going to dedicate a little more time to them and appreciate everything the city's done for me.
Goodness, Eric.
Could we entertain a five-minute break?
Yeah, 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 please. I mean, Mr. Mayor, may they have a five-minute break or a short reception or?
Yeah, one as the goal is called.
Very good, thank you.
Make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Chapman, call the order, please.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Messina.
Yes.
Jacoby.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langner.
Yes.
Coulson.
Yes.
Okay, take a five, people.
Sir, so we're right with you, okay?
Okay, no worries.
Okay, thanks.
I think you're making it.
I think I was either.
Take care of yourself.
I got knocked on my backside at work right before Christmas, and I have a compression fracture in the vertebrae. So this is new today, and it's, I was really more comfortable about it. Yeah. I got knocked on my keister at work, and I fractured the vertebrae right before Christmas. Yeah. Really fortunate, didn't break my tailbone. It's not displaced, so.
Did you remove something?
It's doing all right.
Yes.
I have to have a, like, this is my foot. So they just, fifteen minutes.
Was it pressure?
Baby or any? This meeting back to order?
I make a motion, then we come back in order. Second.
Chapman, call the order, please.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Messina.
Yes.
Jacoby.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes.
Langner.
Yes.
Coulson.
Yes.
Okay. I'm calling again, Lee.
We're having this presented, a presentation.
Okay. Here in a minute, you're going to hear from Chris and Jonathan from a company called Flock. Among other things, what they have, and what we're interested in, is a license plate reader cameras. So we put these strategically in our town. Right now, we have five to catch people coming into our city. People driving off into the licensed cars that have been involved in crime. People that are in the cars that have warrants associated to a licensed plate of the vehicle. It would be a force multiplier, and you'll probably hear that the term comes from him as well. It's pretty much having a cop sitting on five hundred spots in your city, twenty-four seven. We get abused in a lot of our crime recently. One of the cameras we're going to put right here on Royal, so all these businesses are protected. We can always get a shot of the car going into the business district. And what you can do with that is you can put the license plate in the system, and it'll pull up wherever they were hit, run by these, by these cameras. And you put in a vehicle, if you don't get a license plate, you just put in a red sedan. Okay, and it'll pop up. Every red sedan has been by these cameras in the whole system. Liberty has them, Clay County has them, I believe Flatstone, and several other areas around here. So it's not just our city, it'll be protected by these cameras. Okay, we can search all the cities around us for these cars and plates that come through our city for possible crime. They will be able to tell you a little bit more how their system works, but I am extremely excited to be able to get these cameras, as well as all of our officers. But I will, I will turn it over over soon. Do you have any, do you have any questions around that? Chris, all your work.
All right, sir, I appreciate it. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Well, just to do an introduction, my name is Chris Futrell. I'm the territory sales manager over here at Flock Safety. Former law enforcement myself, I worked great as a deputy for Lawson Justice County Sheriff's Department, custody patrol, and then our gang units for a little before moving over here at success with Flock. And that's why I made my move. Jonathan will be the one presenting today. Jonathan oversees our team that presents to city officials. So he's going to be addressing a lot of those concerns and explaining what Flock is and what Flock isn't. Before I hand it off to Jonathan, I just want to mention, so we work within ninety percent of the departments in the Kansas City metro area. We will be partnering very soon with Kansas City, Missouri PD. We are partnered with Kansas City, Kansas PD. And we are also in the works of partnering with the airport as well. We work with about ninety percent. We've got probably a thousand cameras in the Kansas City metro area today. Just one story I did want to start with is, this all started when I first met with Chief. They used a camera from Clay County Sheriff's Office for the shooting that you guys had a couple months back. One of the officers was able to reach out to Clay County. Clay County is a client of ours. They were able to identify the car that was used with that shooting, and then get that suspect identified, so they're able to make that encounter, make that arrest. And that's what really started this conversation and why we're here today. But from here, I'll hand it off to Jonathan, and he'll present on what Flock is and why you guys should consider partnering with us.
Good evening, folks. My name is Jonathan Bass, happy to join you all. Wanted to share a little bit more about Flock and why we were founded. Back in twenty seventeen, our CEO was actually a victim of property crime. There was serious car break-ins in his neighborhood, and he at the time had a doorbell camera. And he thought that would be sufficient enough to get some evidence. Could folks hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful.
She was just making it full screen, good.
Wonderful, yeah. I'll give him a minute. So at the time, he thought, you know, doorbell camera footage is enough to apprehend the suspect. It was not. He went to his local police department, and he said they needed a license plate. So after doing a little bit of research, he found that the license plate reading technology has been around for over thirty years. It's just very expensive. So he developed the, what became now the best-in-class prototype, actually using his iPhone at the time. And it's not cost prohibitive. Actually, now we're in over five thousand communities, helping solve over ten percent of crime nationwide. And we're really helping answer the paradox where police are asked to do more with less. Staffing shortages are a real issue, and being able to recruit enough form candidates is also some of those being widely reported nationwide. The solution to that is.
They just died?
There's no warrant, was there? Can you get on your phone, Chief, and let him know that we're off, or I can do it as soon as we get this going? You don't have that on your camera, the calendar invite?
Or do you take it back? This is a digital offer.
Yeah. Yes, I haven't plugged it in back there.
It's in the report, the first page.
You know, license readers, conservators can't.
These are license plate readers.
Huh?
These are license plate readers.
A license plate reader on a cop car following down the street. Licenses are different in stationary.
It's still a license.
Yeah, well, it's also a person reader. It can read persons, it can give you descriptions of people, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, if you work like at Nebraska Furniture Market up there in the tower, you've got all kinds of cameras, okay? And you can sit way off in the back of the parking lot, and from the tower, if that person puts a letter on their dash, you can read every word of that letter way back there. That's.
Yeah, these don't cost that much.
They're operational cameras, you know? Yeah, they're license readers too.
Yeah.
But they can't get on all their private and run down the road and read the license plate of cars going up and down.
Is that where you start back up?
Can you bypass an update?
Unless it has an option for, you know, if it's.
Is he casting or is he plugged in with the TV?
Huh?
Is he casting? He's got the smart TV.
The, oh, it's a smart TV? Does it, excuse me, open, because it does zoom links on his calendar, so unless.
It's not letting me open Zoom on my calendar on my phone. Except besides tapping the button or tapping the joint thing.
Always a good job.
Greatly, so one of the, one of the guys that worked with me, I believe, is from P C. He got a living, so he has access to prove that I was on the roll. Probably haven't had his side voice, and so we make that happen. He hasn't had his side voice, and so we're gonna have to, yeah.
Destroy the stuff.
Yeah, it's a pretty good thing usually, it does have a voice.
It would have hurt to be outside, but it's only there for a period. She has all the jobs.
I want to read this.
You want to answer it, because we're gonna have to.
I was gonna bring up something else. I had one new business today. In Pleasant Valley, they're like, giving them all the parts and remotes.
Got questions about it, and those are the things that we ask.
Yeah, it's worth saying, update them.
How, how is this going to be typed into the police database?
There'll be like a web address, we could go online, and we also get it straight to our phones. Let's say we put in a, a car of interest for that type of crime, or whatever. But that passes to a camera, but it will come straight to our phone and tell us where it's at, so we can get in the air and stop it.
So it's not plugged into dispatch or anything like that?
It would be, yes. They would get it, there would be, I'll call it an app on the computer, and, and it'll pop up right on their computer. That's, that's what it is. And they'd be able to relate it to us. Like I said, we'd also be getting it straight on our cell phone.
Is it something that would like automatically pop up on your phone, or would you have to have the website open? Like activate, open it, it'll like launch it, or you were notified or something?
Yeah, it'll alert you.
And they talked about recurring costs, anything like that?
It'd be fifteen thousand a year. For five cameras, three thousand for a camera.
Do you know what their footage retention period is? Like, how long do they-
I wanna say thirty days.
So we can set it to what we want, but it's better be longer, like a year, five years.
The only problem is you're keeping all that storage.
A lot.
Is it stored locally? Sorry?
I think he has the same question.
No, it's, it's on there.
So if it's, if it's stored by them, then do they charge extra for additional storage?
No. Not, not that I know of.
Not that you know of, yeah. I know, I, maybe it goes into like obscene amount of time, but-
Myself, this Ms. Mark and Mr. Slater had me with them. Captain Crayton? What, two months ago, roughly? And we asked a question.
It was before it snowed, that's all I remember.
And I, I don't think they charge more for, for consists.
And then-
They're movable? Well, you can move them from pole to pole, but no, you cannot get on the app and move them. My point is, you know, I mean, just move it up throughout the city. You could, you could, yes.
Is that something that they would do, or would we do that?
They would.
They would?
Yeah, they, they do all of the contacting MoDOT. If it's on a MoDOT state pole, they contact MoDOT and do it.
So, right now, you all, you have talked with this group, and you have identified five locations.
Correct.
You wanna talk about those?
Sure. One on North Church, coming southbound at Seventy-Sixth. So everything up there by Walmart, coming into our city. On Pleasant Valley Road, coming eastbound. So catch everything that's coming on Pleasant Valley Road into our city. One right there in front of Quick Trip, coming westbound. Another one on South Lurie Parkway, over there kind of by Casey's, coming southbound, so that's one, two. Yep, Sixty-Nine Highway coming northbound. Right there at Sixty-Nine Ravina, right there by A-one used cars or northbound over everyone. So that would be the five.
And several of those locations, we have to talk with MoDOT?
Sixty-Nine, North Church, and I think that's it. And from Quick Trip, back from Quick Trip, that's, that's it.
And then Quick Trip, I mean, has MoDOT been friendly with getting these cameras?
They weren't at the beginning, when we started coming out, but I think they've done, they've done so much that they just kind of give them.
Are you wired those cameras?
Okay. Gee, wired. Let me, let me go through a scenario for them, so I can get a better understanding. Car comes by, okay, let's just say they have a warrant or something with the car. Flags it, sends it to the officer on duty, or to dispatch. And what does dispatch do at that point?
They get on the radio and say, "Did you see this block hit, it just popped up there in front of Quick Trip? It's a blue Chevy Camaro, such and such license plate, and don't tell you if it is warrant attached, or what it's wanted for." Excuse me. Yeah, right there, immediate probable cause of death.
This man did a presentation that orders Kansas City or city with the red light cameras, you know, on stopping. Because they've been, they've been doing research, they keep saying, bring them back.
That's what I heard, but I don't know, I don't think they-
They haven't heard anymore.
Any else got a question for the chief?
So the camera has a night vision lens or whatever?
Correct. You're day and night, life and camera. If something goes wrong with them, they replace it. Unless it's like, somebody steals it, I think that's on us. But they haven't, they haven't had any problems with it, because, I mean, they're, they're high, so. But if they malfunction, their software goes bad, whatever, they replace it. No fee on that.
Yeah, and it, it looked like from here that it was, it was just the basically recurring fee in that installation, hardware, all of that's included.
Once, once they upgrade, their cameras will come out and replace them. So all that, all their upgrades and updates are, I say free, we pay for it.
Yeah, it's a, and all the boost of service.
Yeah, just reading the, the thing, "Customer is not permitted to remove, reposition, reinstall, tamper with, alter, adjust, or otherwise take possession or control of Block hardware."
Correct. It is not on our system.
So if we wanted something moved, you could touch to them, and then they would-
Yeah.
Although I don't see why that would be.
No, I, I think those five spots are pretty good. If there's any questions, we'll come out and capital purchase them.
Which is a gimpless friend.
Can we get a full terms and conditions for them? But what we got is just bits and pages of twenty-page document. Good from page one, page three, page five, all the odd numbers.
Twelve different.
Or even the missing, we have all of their odds.
Okay, go on the public car man.
No.
Can't they look, just come up please?
We're still waiting on that. Well, I guess we can do this while we're waiting.
I mean, would we need to make a motion to take the agenda out of order? If that's what we wanted to do, but I, I, it seems to be like, or about to have them right back up. Mayor? Do we want to tell her to, to wait while we, until we finish the presentation?
There is, I guess if this is going to come back over, she'll have to wait.
It's, I, I think you're about to get it right back up, right?
You mind waiting?
It's okay. I understand technology.
Close that box.
If it dropped down, it must have joined.
You can see.
The arrow that makes it join.
I can't, can't read it, but I can see when to join.
Yeah, I mean, that should, that should have happened.
Yeah.
Last time I ever copied it, I went, you go like that.
Yeah, if you copy the link, you can open it from, right there? Uh, can you put that drop down?
That's all we're gonna go.
I don't know, probably. That'd be a question.
Oh, I know what I did. I was gonna make sure it entered.
Is it blocking the pop-up?
Yeah, join from your browser. This gets back. And then I'm gonna have to put my name there.
It's like the loud?
Allow. You're not talking up the basses. There we go. Do you want full screen? Oh, it is full screen. Maybe? Make it.
Yes, better.
Let me know, I got, with this allow, maybe that helps. Alright, sorry about that. You there?
Oh, yeah, we're here.
Okay.
Oh, alright. I appreciate it.
Sorry.
Good evening. Alright. Jonathan, I'm gonna jump right into it, I wanna be conscious of your guys' time, so.
Need to something, raise a picture.
Can folks hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Alright, so we'll-
Go ahead.
Go ahead, yeah, just put it in full screen again. Alright, you're good to start.
Wonderful. Happy to jump back in, sorry to hear about the technical difficulties. Yeah, we wanted to be brief, but also really wanted to hit at least some of these points. I think it's important to kind of clarify a few things. We built this technology with privacy in mind. The data is yours. We can't sell it, but we store it for you. And it's in a government cloud, and it, all the data is encrypted, it's not connected to twenty-third parties, so. For example, if the DMV gets hacked, we're not getting hacked. And we're only storing data from our LPR system, nothing.
That is scheduled with the end of?
Probably. Oh, I keep getting shocked, man. It's still here. Okay. I don't know why we can't hear.
Join with audio bottom left.
Alright, can we hear them, maybe?
Yeah, we can hear you guys.
Okay, now we're, I don't know what happened, it decided to jump out of the audio.
Let's just leave the screen size where it is.
I know. Yeah.
We'll do this take three?
Right.
Take three?
Yeah.
Can I get a yes?
Yes, you are good.
Alright, take three, okay. So, we built this technology with privacy in mind. The data again is yours, we can't sell it, it, it's hard to leave it unless it's part of a criminal investigation. So after thirty days, if any of the data is there, it's not gonna be part of some criminal investigation, it is part of leaving. And yeah, we also, you can't just go into the system and search around like what my neighbor's doing. You need a search reason, and any search in the system is part of an indefinitely available audit trail. So we enable you guys to do periodic audits of the system. And yeah, we believe this technology reduces bias and fraud solving, because we're enhancing objectivity. And we do provide a transparency portal, free of charge, where you can actually highlight to the public what, you know, this is another tool in the toolbox, what it's used for, what it's not being used for. And also showcase the return on investment, so some other agencies show, hey, we've recovered X number of stolen vehicles, this amount of money in stolen property. So we can really highlight, highlight that as this tool is used in criminal investigations. So just to kind of recap, you know, we're talking about a safety as a service. We consider ourselves a safety as a service partner, where you're getting fair pricing upfront, solar powered devices. We cover the installation and the ongoing maintenance. We, we support you in the permitting assistance and the storage, all of that in one fixed price. And that's really the value that we provide as Block, is we will become your partners as long as you want to have us. We will be kind of your backend IT, making sure this technology is fully working in a very competitive rate. We are in over a hundred fifty law enforcement agencies in Missouri. And we, we help solve some crimes. I will, for the sake of brevity, just share this example. But we, we were able to help apprehend a suspect on, on twenty twenty-four July tenth from reports of a sexual assault. Officers interviewed the victim and reviewed nearby surveillance footage to obtain a description of the suspect's vehicle. They queried the LPRs for similar vehicles, identified one and responded to the registered owner's residence. They subsequently arrested the suspect on July twenty-second, who was charged with aggravated sexual assault, sexual abuse. As a matter of fact, this was someone who was riding on a scooter, so there were these reports, and some of the were conflicting data. But they were able to make sense of it and very quickly respond. And I did want to just quickly also just share this example coming out of Old Fallon, where an eighty-seven-year-old woman went missing after departing her residence for a doctor's appointment. So at nine-thirty, she was supposed to go see her doctor. And by three-thirty, her mom, her daughter was worried, because effectively she was just driving around town. She had some mental health issues. So when she reported at three-thirty, in fifteen minutes, their LPR system was able to help locate and initiate a slot to get her home safely. So this is just one example out of four hundred. We helped recover, find, identify over four hundred people nationwide who are missing. And that's an underestimation. We probably helped more across the country. It's just a matter of working with our customers to get all the stories. So I just wanted to quickly wrap that up, and happy to answer any questions. Thanks again for having us.
Yeah, I've got a question for you. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm on the opposite side of the room.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. On the slide that, that indicated how the device has received power, it mentioned solar power. How is the data connection to the devices? It doesn't sound like you try to hardwire anything. Is that a cellular connection?
Correct. Yes, it is cellular.
It's LTE, yeah.
Okay. And one of the search queries that you mentioned was, you could, you could input a, a thing you want to look for. A license plate number, a vehicle description, a scooter, apparently. Is there also the ability for our officers to input a timeframe, to say, hey, I would like to review the, the hour between nine o'clock and ten o'clock, I don't know what I'm looking for, but I'll know it when I see it?
Yeah, so let's say your business district where Chief wants to put one of the cameras. He's gonna catch everything coming into that business district. Let's say that one of those businesses were vandalized or robbed at two in the morning. What Chief and his team can do is say between twelve a, you know, twelve and three, who came in and out of that area? He's gonna get a list of everybody that came in and out. He's gonna be able to look at those plates and determine, okay, these people are associated with this business. Either they work there, or they own the businesses, or whatever, they've got a good reason for being there. Or they don't, and now he has a suspect list of who he needs to have encounters with to see if they were involved in the crime that happened.
Okay, so I, let me rephrase my question a little bit. The, the way you answered it, it said that it returns a list of hits, a list of detections. Is there a way to scrub through that five hours of footage by hand? Or does it just show you, hey, this is where motion was detected, at this point, this point, that point, this point?
Yeah, so it can scrub through, and if you can get as granular as you want, or you can keep it broad. You can say, any cars between this time? Or you could say, what cars between this time match the description of the nine-one-one call that we also had? That was a white Ford F-150 pickup truck with a bumper sticker on the back. You can get granular like that as well, to determine, hey, this is the car we know we're looking for, because the business was vandalized. We had a nine-one-one call, we kind of know what we're looking for. And then it'll pull that list for you to get even more granular and find what you're looking for.
Okay, I, I, I think if we, if we was able to answer some, some of that as, as well, I think there's still just a, a miscommunication. Okay, I think the police chief was able to answer some of that as well. I think there's still just a miscommunication.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, but basically the question being, could we request to see just an hours of footage? And just see all the footage from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM? And just look at the footage raw and not hits on vehicles or stuff like that?
I understand. Sorry, my apologies.
No, you're fine.
No, the way that our cameras work is they have a laser that goes out and back at about 45-degree angle. When a car goes by, it hits that laser, and then when they drive past that camera, it will then take a picture of the back of the car. We do have cameras that do live view, but this is not the cameras that we're looking at today.
Okay.
Those are something that you guys could consider in the future, but the cameras we're talking about today do not do live.
Perfect, makes sense. So basically, it's just letting that recognizes vehicles and gets information on the vehicles, but different than a security camera that's just capturing everything that's happening.
Right. Yeah, to really simplify this, it's there are snapshots of the back of cars.
Perfect, thank you.
What about, does it pick up pedestrians?
Nothing of people, nothing of pedestrians, no images there.
Correct. In theory, if it goes by and it takes a snapshot like you see on the bottom left of the screen of that car, could there be a pedestrian standing there potentially? But that's not what it's designed for. It doesn't take, it just takes snapshots of those cars. I'm gonna get you that objective data from that.
I have one follow-up question as well, but I guess it's in you set of questions because. So by, if we were to procure the system, that would automatically link us into the network of other Flock users? In that if another agency requested a particular license plate, if there was a hit on that license plate within our city limits on one of our cameras, then it would display it by default, right? And then vice versa. If we requested, if we put in, hey, I'm looking for this license plate number, it'll show us everything within your network. Is that true?
That is true. So we set up automatic sharing that all the departments there are able to share. You don't have to, wanna be private, you can, but it wouldn't make sense to. All of the, we want all of the law enforcement agencies nearby to work together. We want your officers to work with the county. Let's just name a few, like Parkville, Gladstone, Liberty, Kearney, Excelsior Springs, Richmond, Clay County, Blue Springs, Lee Summit, Green Valley, Oak Grove, Odessa, Belton, Raymar. There's more. I'm personally working with quite a few right now, the airport being one of them that we'll be adding. Kansas City, Kansas is a client. Overland Park's about to be a client. Kansas City, Missouri PV is about to be a client as well. So they would all get access to that, and if one of the cars that they're looking for in conjunction with a crime goes into your jurisdiction, you're going to be alerted that hit.
How much information, when you get a license plate number, do you get on the driver? How much of his personal information do you receive?
So to answer that, you're only getting information of cars. The police have to take the extra step of verifying that on other records. Like, let's say you have the license plate, they would have to run the license plate to be able to get further information on an individual. The system itself is just capturing information and data of vehicles.
How much personal information do you get on the driver?
Is that, is that just none?
None.
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 None? Okay, my next question is, what's the cost of all this?
Yeah, so we're looking at five cameras, and the cost is $15,000 for five cameras.
Thank you. And that's annual recurring?
Correct.
And then I asked the chief about this, but just to confirm with you guys that that would include hardware, software, installation fees if a camera had problems and needed to be repaired, or you guys had updates, that kind of stuff would all be included in that recurring annual cost?
Correct. Yeah, it covers the cellular, also the install, confirmants. Everything associated with those cameras is in that cost.
Is the price locked in indefinitely? Excuse me, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. As far as some of the other municipalities, what system do they go with? Do they just go with the base system like what we're considering, or do they go with the one that's a little bit more things?
They all went with the same one that you're looking at. Most of them went with about double the amount of cameras that chief was asking for. Most of them went with somewhere between 10 and 12 cameras.
And then I see here in the terms about billing and payment or notice of changes to fees. So if, when we sign a contract, are we locked in at that annual rate? Or would we be subject to any changes in your guys' fees in further years?
So I can lock that fee for five years if you would like. I just provide it like that so that you're able to see it because that's just clear, you don't really need to. But I can lock that fee for five years.
Five years? Okay, thank you.
On page nine, it says, Flock should provide customer within 60-day notice if any change of fees prior to the end of the initial term or renewal term is applicable. That's on page nine.
Yeah, so that's, I was asking if, yeah, that was my question.
Right. I think most of my remaining questions are like internal policies and procedures type stuff. I don't know that I have any other questions for you guys on the phone.
I have no further questions either.
All right.
If we decide to terminate this service, we didn't get all the copies of the contract. What kind of notification is there required?
Just 30 days notice.
Okay, thank you.
Do you provide general policies?
By general policy, and you defined what you mean by that.
As far as use of the system, shareable information?
So we help provide some best practices as we work with thousands of different law enforcement agencies. And there's, I mean, different agencies like to share their policies, but we ourselves are not policymakers. We just advise.
I think it'd be good for us to grab those best use cases and the policy and see if they would work for us.
I can reach out to delivery five seconds.
Right.
Exactly, exactly what your policy is out there, something we can help provide.
Should we let them go?
Yeah, that's up to the board.
I have no further questions. Right, well, I don't, I don't know if this is really my job. It might be for the mayor. But I'm done with all the questions, so I would like to let them off the Zoom calls so that we can respect their time and not have them sitting here.
Right, and we'll get back with you. Right, chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
All right, so our next computer's still on?
Thank you. About here. You got it, no problem. Gotcha.
So any motion coming out of all this? Now we'll go to public comment then. One more time, Kathy.
No problem. So my name is Kathy Lucas. I met Mr. Slater. How many months are still gone now? And what I'm here to chat with you about and share with you is some information for your employees as a voluntary benefit. You're quite welcome. Do you want me to stand here? Okay, thank you. So, I represent a company that's been in business 53 years. It's a company called Legal Shield. They're an international company that put together or is the originator of Everyday Life Legal Plan. We work with over 140,000 companies to offer it as an employee benefit. And we also have what I like to call a personal information, online reputation, and cybersecurity protection. That's for the people, for their personal information. We offer this to companies of all sizes. My specialty for 13 years has been working with employers under 75 employees. I work with about 260 companies from all different types to municipalities, counties, so forth. What's nice about this is there's no red tape, there's no cost to you to offer it, it's employee-paid. They do own the coverage. It is theirs. They can take it with them when they retire or leave. There is an amendment that gets put into place that prohibits usage in an employee-employer-related matter. So if they, I don't typically mention it because most people aren't thinking that way, but if they should call in and talk with their law firm, they would be stopped immediately because that amendment is in place. Okay. It is voluntary, so meaning what we do is we put it in front of the employees. We give it to them as an option. They can choose what's best for their family. We can take it through payroll deduction. We can do direct bill. In talking a little bit more of Georgia, I understand that some of the folks aren't always online, doing things, you know, electronically, so that's not a problem. We can do it through what I call the old-fashioned way of paper. I go around to all the sites, help them activate their coverage and get involved. So if you'd like a little detail on each of the plan, I'm happy to do that real quickly. Your Everyday Life Legal Plan is, Legal Shield originated that. So what they did was they take a top-quality law firm in every state, they wrap services around it. So if you think about Netflix, or Uber, or Amazon Prime, they're a subscription-based model. That's basically what this is here, is collected by the power. So they get the power of having a top-quality law firm, but can wrap those services into the coverage and make it very affordable for them. So in other words, they can call anytime they want, ask anything they want, and never get a bill. They can say, what should I do? I don't understand. I'm being overcharged. I've got a landlord issue. I need to get my estate planning done. They can have those services and use it and no additional charges built into the premium. So one of our biggest perks is getting folks estate planning done. And that's done at a will, living will, healthcare, and financial powers of attorney for the family. We're a bit different than healthcare in that you don't have to be married to have the coverage. You just have to be in the same household. So it can be an employee, a spouse, or domestic partner. We don't care as long as they're under the same roof. Same way with blended families. If they can claim the dependents, we don't care either. We'll just cover them all up to age 26. So that's been in place since the company started. It's all about making equal access for everybody. It goes up to age 26, so as soon as that dependent hits 26, they roll off, very similar to your healthcare. There is a mobile app that they can have on their phone. It's an app that they can just tap, call directly to their law firm, and ask anything they want. It also includes a prepaid attorney for if they get a moving traffic violation anywhere in the country, since we are nationwide. You can't do Canada, but we can do the United States. And all they do is upload that ticket through the app. It goes directly to their law firm. And the goal is to keep it off their driving record, which affects their insurance. Now, from an employee perspective, if they're driving company vehicles, it helps keep those rates in check for the employer as well. Your IDShield plan, as you all probably know, is tough out there with everything that's going on. 2024 was probably the worst year as far as the most invasive breaches, as far as healthcare, United Healthcare, Change Healthcare, all of those. That's our very personal information. What IDShield does and is recognized for is being the most comprehensive as far as monitoring personal information. We have what is called, I like to affectionately call it, a push app. So the push, the app pushes out and says, you know, Matthew, did you just change your address? Or Kathy, are you applying for this loan? Or Serenity, did you know a sex offender moved into your neighborhood? It's about who's in our life, not just who's in our wallet. And when it does that, it helps minimize, can help minimize the damage. Where IDShield really shines and has been awarded for the last four or five years is the ability to fix it. We're the only company that offers private licensed investigators that are in-house that actually will put that person back to pre-theft status no matter how long it takes. They don't pay extra for that. It's built into the coverage. If someone on your staff right now would enroll, and they have a pre-existing condition, that would be covered as well. So we don't care how it happens or when, we'll fix it for them. Okay? Again, that can cover an individual or a family. In your packet on the right-hand side, I did put in there a proposal so that you could see what the coverage is all about. The very last page gives you the rates per month. And what I like to do in working with employer groups is note, once I know what the pay raises are, I adjust my sheet to show what comes out of each paycheck, because as employees like to see what comes out of their paycheck. It's a post-tax benefit, so it can come in anytime, off-cycle. It can be effective whenever you want it to be. I like to do it, of course, on the first of the month. And then also included what we do, because most smaller employers can't afford all the perks, we build in a perks program. So anytime an employee rolls in either of the coverages, they get access to this program. It's got over 450 companies that offer discounts, anything from groceries, stuff for your car, cell phone care, vehicle purchases, travel, entertainment. It's a great way to offset the cost of the premium and have additional savings. So I just like to mention that because as a smaller city, you know, sometimes those extra perks can cost money, but it's all built in with this coverage. So on your right or your left-hand side of your packet, I just put in some information about how it's one of the top five voluntary benefits that are in the market this year, and then our corporate profile. So with that, I'll leave it to you. See if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Lucas? Thank you, Ms. Lucas. We'll get right back with you.
You're quite welcome. Is there anybody missing that I should leave some for? Okay.
There's a Ms. Scarborough.
Yeah. Oh, there's the bench there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no comment from the city attorney. I have no comments, so you all stay warm and dry and safe. Okay, Mr. Chapman, you got any, oops, I got forgotten, the older one. Is there any older one coming in or?
Yes, I just had some questions. I was going over to find out about. From one of the meetings, someone had a concern about our ward boundaries not kind of matching up. Has anything been done about that, resolving that? The ordinance that we passed is correct. Apparently, there was an information sheet at the front window that was incorrect, but the ordinance is correct.
Okay, have we fixed the information sheet at the front window?
That I don't know. I think there's something.
So are we?
I need to be showing that, information sheet that is, that's incorrect.
Would? Would you be able to show Matthew the difference?
I think it would be taken care of.
Then I had a question. What's going forth about the bulletproof glass?
He just took a phone call.
Okay. And of course, then Sarah's not here about what she brought up about that had not been paying the judge and the prosecutor.
That is an ordinance that was passed. We got information from our attorney. We cannot change the amount until it comes up for renewal July 1st. And I think by that time, we'll need to appoint a new judge.
Then I was asking about what's being done on the bulletproof glass.
We've got three bits. When Sarah gets back there, we'll release it and come back up to administration. And when that happens, we'll start, we'll have presentation for the board.
Okay. And is this where we, we're gonna discuss this about for the civic organization, now coming up with a policy?
Mr. Alice is here just for that. If you wanna take that right now, he is the citizen. If you wanna come talk about you, he and I have worked on that, so.
Yeah, I'll defer to the chief to give the presentation, and then if you have any questions.
So a couple meetings ago, it was brought up again about having an off-duty officer up at the civic center. So myself, excuse me, Mr. Slater met with over the phone, Mr. Alice and Sharon.
Kayla.
Okay. And had a discussion, and this is what we came up with. We don't have problems with. We don't have problems with mom and pop having a little family gathering birthday party, and having a couple beers, it's people that are having 75 or more late night parties, that we're having the problems with. So that's how we came up with the 75, yes, or more. And then, of course, our fee of $50 an hour for minimum five hours, that would generally start from eight o'clock until one, if they stay later, we stay later, and then that just comes out of their security deposit. So they're not out any money, the people that are renting it are paying for it. So that's about all I got. So like I said, so like I said, 75 or more, serving on card. Obviously, if we drive by and there's 200 people there, and they told them that their room was only going to be 20, we could have the opportunity to call an officer in, but that may not be possible. Question was, would we be able to have an officer there every time that they need somebody? Probably not, we're short-staffed. I will reach out to Clay County to open it up to them as well, if we can't get an officer there. But if we can't get an officer there, we'll just go on field. There's, there's off-duty all over the county that goes on field every day, so it's just the minimal.
So if, if you guys were able to be there, are they charged ahead of time for that? For the officer that's supposed to be there?
Yes, they are.
So would, would they just eat the cost?
Yes, they, yes, they would.
Okay, if the officer is able to show up?
They'll come out of their security deposit.
Okay.
If the officer doesn't show up, it's going to come out of your security deposit. If the officer doesn't show up, no, well, if the officer does show up, there'll be paid through their security deposit. If they've got $500 down, they'll just take $250 out of their security deposit.
John, who signs these people up?
Okay. So every Thursday night, there's a volunteer up at the Civic Center. So it rotates between about six to eight of us. They're all volunteers, they've all done it for quite a few years. You know, I hate to say, but some people lie. And it's true, some people do lie. And there's only going to be 20 of us here. Right, so we did discuss that, and my take on that is, yes, people are going to lie.
Yeah.
If people lie and don't cause a problem, I'm not concerned. If people lie and do cause a problem, a police officer will be called, we should probably be contacted, the party will be shut down, they're losing their deposit, and they'll be forced to evacuate from premises.
Then we have, then we have the problem of the party, partiers going from the party like down to the quick trip.
So I would like to address that, because that did happen quite a few years ago. And no, it's not acceptable, and the civic organization doesn't approve anything like that.
Well, you had nothing to do with it, but your party people had everything to do with it.
Right. So A, we feel that those larger parties, if they're truthful, we would have an officer on-site and we'd prevent that. B, I would like the board to understand that last year, we probably had at least 100 rentals, there were three police reports that were not medically related, and two more call reports. So 5% to 10% at the most caused a problem. One is too many, and we feel that having an officer there is a benefit to the city, but also to us, because it reduces our vandalism, it's more likely to clean up and leave the party on time. Anything else? So we still have to run this by our lawyers, do each human how, and then we'll, as this implemented, we hope to do it on February 1st, and any existing contracts or grant filed against us, we'll be legal for us to back in charge.
Sure.
Okay? Any questions? My phone number's on the Pleasant Valley flyer, and run the Civic Center the second Monday of every month. Come on by.
Sarah, anything else?
No. I think that's it.
Any other older man got any comment or question?
I just have my, my reoccurring comment to remind the public that we have the Ethics Committee that is still completely open, no one has applied for it yet, so please, if you are interested, or if you know someone who you think might be a good fit, let them know, it doesn't hurt, doesn't cost anything, doesn't take any, hardly any time to go talk to Matthew, and see what is required of you, if you would like to join. So please feel free to go talk to our city clerk, if you know anyone or yourself are interested. That's it.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Chapman, administration report.
I had submitted a written report, something I wanted to, I guess, point, point out about the report. Did have a resident that had requested a water leak credit, or I was going to cross the sewer credit to his bill, I had provided information, all the women and gentlemen had a couple of questions that I couldn't answer. Mr. Zimmerman was going to try and leave here tonight, doesn't look like he made it, so I was just potentially shut the light before. I will, I will attempt, I have not issued any credit, for this point, that's just a recommended credit. I will get answers to her questions, and at this point, if they also had questions about that.
My questions were, we needed 12 previous water bills, and we've got 11. What was the date that Mr. Zimmerman noticed that there was a break in the hydrant? And where is a plumbers bill, repair company, or receipt that he repaired it himself? Those weren't included in this information. So those things need to be cleared up before we can go forward.
So if I don't protect my outside faucet, and it freezes and bursts, the city's going to credit me on the sewer bill? Is that the way that works?
There is a policy that we adopted.
Does it, does it include if it's just on your private property? That we would cover it, like, like you said, like if you had a, so this is for a hydrant, so I don't think that generally we would cover if somebody had a leak within their own private property.
It's not, it can't be a fire.
It's got to be a water spigot, like a whole house, is that what it is?
It just says unusual sewer charges as a result of a water leak, it doesn't specify where that leak is.
Okay.
In our policy.
Okay, so what, I will follow up with more information. Okay. Hold it a height. Okay, because that's what's said right here, is outside hydrants, so, okay.
Yeah, what was provided was Chapter 70750, the Water Leaks Sewer Bill Credit Policy. Subsection C talks about what the customer has to provide to the city in order to start the process. Subsection 1 says you have to submit the form and provide information describing the abnormal situation or circumstances that resulted in the loss of water. When was it discovered, the cause, and what did you do to stop the water loss, and the arrangements made were errors? And then once it's completed, they have to provide the bill, or a letter, or a list of materials that they did themselves. And then it describes the city's process for, for doing it once all that information's provided.
And it does, it does specifically state in here for conditions, adjustments will not be allowed for water loss arising from carelessness, negligence, or lack of due diligence on the part of the customer, so.
So that sounds like carelessness.
I think we just need to get some more information in order to determine whether it was carelessness.
Yeah, I think if you leave your hose, that's on you.
Anybody else, you got any question? You got anything else? Mr. Slater, you got anything from administration?
Matthew, where are we on 1099s? Have those been created? Well, she does 1095s and W2s. There's 1099s for people that have provided services through the city?
Right, I will, I will follow up. Georgia recently. She's supposed to be on study, so I will follow up.
So that would be through accounts payable? Right.
You going to have a mouth this week, or next week?
We'll have that mouth this week. Yeah, that will be a part of it. Sorry about that. I have no report, and sorry about not getting the financials to you, I'm not going to allow those until I reconcile the accounts. I had some come up today, and I did not get it come up here and finish the reconciliation with Matthew, and we will change our policy as far as trying to get those done quicker in the future, but you'll get those emailed to you along with those four fund balances.
I just had a question follow up, it's been a long time, because we had all the weird meetings and with the weather and everything, but I was still waiting to hear back from you about the service businesses with the gross receipts.
Oh, that was included as part of an email, I'll make sure I get that.
Okay.
It was, if there's an email, I'll look at three other things.
Okay.
So I will, I will parse that and send it to you.
Okay, got it, okay. That's, that was probably my fault, I probably missed it through the entire email.
You're not filling one.
Okay.
Anything else, anybody?
Yes, maybe.
All right, this officer's not here. Director Crunk, Public Works, you got anything for us?
So I provided a written report on the stormwater project. The last sentence on there says, we have extended the allotted number of workdays. We're actually, I thought by the time this hit, meeting, we'd have that, negotiated that, but Brown and I and the contractor are negotiating what that number of days should be. They've lost close to 30 days due to either site conditions or temperatures, nothing due to their fault, my fault, Brown's fault, just strictly mother nature driving that shit. And of course, we are at the point where the next step would be forming walls, curb, stormwater inlet throats, you know, like where your ball rolls into stormwater, those throats have to be poured in asphalt, so horrible time, horrible time to have that list. Plants are closed, security going, here and there opens up one of their plants. But later this week, you probably saw warmer temperatures, so I imagine they'll be out there forming the walls to get ahead to then pour the concrete. Any questions?
The numerous non-working days, are there any penalties in the contract for exceeding the number of working days? Are there, are there penalties that we are going to hit because of this?
No, because none of it's due to the contractor's fault, yeah.
I think written into the contract is weather.
Oh, yeah.
A weather situation, days to account.
Yeah, that would be, we would be hated by every contractor, and I trust you pursue that. So, yeah. Anything else?
I have a question, not related to this specifically, unless there was other questions on this, but I was curious, so, since I'm a newer, relatively resident to Pleasant Valley and obviously to the board, I was curious, just because we had the ice storms and then the snowstorm, what, do we have a general timeline policy that we do? Do we use pre-treatment for ice storms, stuff like that? Because I was one of the unfortunate people that got caught behind the giant accident that happened under the bridge, and then I got stuck and couldn't come back in on Pleasant Valley Road, so I was stuck at the Quick Trip for like an hour, and then police officer out there, he was putting sand down and stuff, so do we have a normal policy for pre-treatment? When you know an ice storm's coming?
Our winter weather policy, I posted in the flyer.
Okay.
For November.
Okay.
Would you not pre-treat?
Okay.
You, your timing has to be perfect, because you would pre-treat your main roads with, like Pleasant Valley Road, say you would go down, you're going to time it saying, okay, we are an hour out, they're saying that the storm's going to start, you go and lay down. We use a 50/50 salt sand mix. So you would go and lay that down, and then as soon as 30 cars drove, it would throw it to the shoulder. In terms of, what was the other question I asked, I'm sorry?
Just, just, I was curious what that was, so I could check the flyer too, I was just curious what the general policy was, because I think we had a crazy amount of accidents of people going off the road on Pleasant Valley Road. I mean, of course, it was, the storm was horrible, it hit super fast and earlier.
You're talking about when the ice kicked in.
Yeah.
So every city, in-state highway, municipality.
Yeah, it was all.
Everybody had that. It wasn't Pleasant Valley.
No, I, I understand, yeah. And it was, and it came earlier than it was reported to.
Yeah.
Which is why I got stuck in it, because I thought I was going to beat it, and I did not.
Exactly. Some of the areas, some of the areas you described that were a mess are MoDOT's responsibility, not ours.
But, yeah, on the highway, yeah.
Not ours.
Yeah.
And that would be in front of Quick Trip.
Okay, that was another one of my questions, is it right there in front of Quick Trip, if that is their responsibility, not?
If you're, if you've come under the two overpasses and you're heading west, between the small vehicle entrance into Quick Trip and the trucking entrance, you'll see the pavement change.
Yeah.
And you'll see a little sign there that says, State Maintenance EnDS.
Gotcha.
That's where we.
Okay.
And then MoDOT is responsible for Church Road, Stewart Road, 69 Highway, I-35, but yeah, we do all like surface streets.
Yeah, yeah, because I, yeah, the, my main question was about here on Pleasant Valley Road, going down Pleasant Valley Road, so is it, the, generally what we're supposed to do is an hour before the storm starts, or are you just start when the storm starts, or after the storm is starting?
What occurs if it's at odd hours is, the officer on duty tells dispatch, hey, the roads are getting slick, dispatch calls.
Okay.
And then I come in and see what's going on, and it says.
Okay.
If we need all three of us, or just two of us, or put one on standby, the storm like we had, snowing like crazy for three days.
Yeah.
The guy's got to be out of the trucks for a certain period of time, because you will, you'll literally start hallucinating.
Yeah.
When you're cruising around like that. The other unfortunate thing was, I was pulled out of the fire truck Saturday night, taken to North Kansas City Hospital, which left Cory and Josh by themselves, which is going like that, needing really long, all, all your guys.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay. That's, that's, I wanted just to update on the policy and kind of understanding, just for.
But I can send it to you, or it's in?
Yeah, I'll check the flyer.
November flyer.
If I still have, I don't know if I have the November flyer, but that's, I can also.
I can get it to you.
Yeah, that'd be, that would be great, if I could look at it.
Will do.
Thank you.
Is that it? Anybody else got a question? Thank you, Chief. Chief McNewsome.
I just provided a written report, and since it is our year-end number, I thought I'd just kind of go ahead and highlight them. So for 2024, we ran 573 calls, which was just a few more, or a few less than last year, which we ran 579. Of those 573 calls, we transported 270 folks to the hospital. So we've been, you know, we've been busier in the past, really during COVID, but still pretty active for one ambulance, so. Questions?
Here, we for, is this, should this say 24 transports for the month of December instead of November?
Oh, it should.
Okay.
I missed that one. Sorry. It is December.
You just put that on there about, I did that sound on the fire truck, there was no problems.
No. No, that was all time, Chief.
I know, that's what I thought.
I like the training.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Chief McGilly, you got anything?
Our report was in your packet, we're all numbers pretty good, but a lot of death investigation problem. What we're going on, that was supposed to be back for several, several years, including COVID, so it's a little slower next year, but, other than that, that's all I have. Other than that, that's all I have.
I have a question about the presentation we just saw.
Yeah.
So is this something that you were hoping to implement this year? Is it something that we're looking at for budget of next year? What was your thought?
I would like to this year.
This year? So then I don't know if this is something that we should discuss as the board now or if people want to take time to review it over more and then discuss it at maybe the next meeting?
That's something you'll have to get there.
Yeah, it is. I mean, I think it's definitely something that we could, should consider. The only other question I had about it was, and I, I kind of doubt the answer is yes on this, but just in case, I'll ask it. With having a system like this, there's no chance that that would reduce the amount of officers that you need? Yeah, I didn't think so, but just in case I figured I'd ask.
Yeah, definitely.
So at the end of the presentation, I said that there were some things that just a question I had that were more internal than involved them. Some, some of those things involve like mandating use of individual logins to ensure that when we go do an audit and mandate a time period and frequency of auditing, that every action taken within the system is attributable to a single, to a user and not have shared login or a dispatcher, like the dispatch center that's able to do it regardless of who's sitting in the chair. It's individualized, policy-based. That, and I think having those documented is gonna go a long way to help ensure that we're using the system appropriately and responsibly.
Sure.
Hundred percent. We, we share or we sign a that's a mule's degree, not anything. We get off of our criminal justice system. We have to swear to our name and we won't share any of it outside of law enforcement. So it'd be the same thing.
So I think the main question would come down to cost and budgeting unless there's anyone who's had an issue with the I don't know if program is the right word, program itself. So I don't know if we should have a discussion about budget, if this is something that we could afford in, you said, the capital improvements? Or something that we would be interested in adding or not?
Well, I need to look at the budget. We don't have a current updated budget to look at to see where we are. We don't know about collections on sales tax, use tax, any of the taxes that we're, we're going to land. And hundred and seven thousand, something like that was used out of savings to balance the budget. We had some other things, unexpected things to hit the budget. Then looking at this, we may also need to look at putting a public works opening in position. Chris may need to have some time off and to get another person in there. If we get another snowstorm like what we had, we're gonna need somebody, we're gonna need somebody this summer. So we need to be able to cover that cost in like forty-five thousand dollars. So I gotta look at some things. There's also, MBL looked at our computers and there's some that are gonna have to be replaced and the servers replaced. And those items weren't budgeted for totally. So we've got to look into those costs as well.
So I just want to make sure that we're leaving with some type of answer rather than it just floating in the ether forever. So is this something that maybe we want to look at at end of first quarter? Or what time would we need to realistically look at this and make a formal decision?
Without budget reports, we can't look at anything because we don't know where we sit.
So, so do we want to do it at end of first quarter or do we need it to be later? Do we do it sooner?
It all depends on what kind of information we can get. So we've got to get through the end of January to get the required documents out and get statement accounts reconciled and see where we are. We can't, that steps and we can't push any faster than what people can do to work.
All right, well. End of first quarter would be, what is that, in April? Or March?
March thirty-first, be the end of the first quarter.
So then do we want to just discuss it in April or we'd be hoping to make a formal decision on it before April?
I would hope we can make a decision before then, but.
The bottom line is we gotta make sure that we have the money paid for it. As simple as that.
Yeah.
I mean, till you, till you know if you're gonna have money paid for it, it ain't no sense talking about anything. We gotta pay the bills that we got before we make new ones.
That's right. I, I fully agree. I just want to make sure that we have a set time to talk about it.
Well, I mean, the set time needs to happen once we get the reconciliation, once we get the money, once the finance chair gives us the information we need. That's, I mean.
I don't have any information to give you. We don't have reports. I can't pull this out of the air. That's not my job.
I think I'm being, I don't know if I'm being completely misunderstood here in what I'm saying.
I understand.
You just want to set an answer on the phone, don't you, John?
Yes.
I understand that.
I know you can't pull it up right now. I'm not asking for it to be pulled up right now. Should we look at it end of February?
I would like to know in February if we can or not. But it's all dependent on when and what can be done.
If, Matthew, if we could just have it on the next agenda and if we can't make a decision at that time, we'll just push it to the agenda. After that, we'll just keep pushing it until we have a better numbers.
Anybody else got any questions? There's a chief, he's already sat down. Okay. Alderwoman Jacobi, you got anything from Personnel Chair?
Yes, I do. For the Fire Department, I have an approval of annual step increase for Philip Wizcom, single role medic from pay grade one oh eight, step two at seventeen eighty-six per hour to step three at eighteen twenty-two per hour, effective one nineteen twenty-five. Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Chapman, Alderwoman.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Messelman.
Yes.
Jacobi.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langner.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
I also have an approval of annual step increase for Kevin Davis, firefighter medic from pay grade one ten, step three at eighteen seventy-five per hour to step four, nineteen thirteen per hour, effective one nineteen twenty-five. Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Chapman, Alderwoman.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Messelman.
Yes.
Jacobi.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langner.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Also have an approval of annual step increase for Kate Lynn Browning, firefighter medic from pay grade one ten, step one at eighteen oh three per hour to step two at eighteen thirty-nine per hour, effective one nineteen twenty-five. Second?
Discussion? Mr. Chapman, Alderwoman.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Messelman.
Yes.
Jacobi.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langner.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Also I have an approval to our Sydney Williams, volunteer firefighter at ten dollars per car, affected, called, affected one twenty-one twenty-five. Second?
Discussion? Mr. Chapman, Alderwoman.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Messelman.
Yes.
Jacobi.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langner.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
And also I have to unaccept the resignation of Caleb Mason, volunteer firefighter, affected one thirteen twenty-five. Second?
Discussion? Mr. Chapman, Alderwoman.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Messelman.
Yes.
Jacobi.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langner.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
And for the Communications Department, I have accept the resignation of Jacqueline Williams, part-time communications officer, effective August first, twenty twenty-four. Second?
Discussion? Mr. Chapman, Alderwoman.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Messelman.
Yes.
Jacobi.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langner.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
That's all I have.
No, you've got the Public Works.
That is a vacant position.
Public Works.
Oldham and Miss.
No, no, no. Mr. Mayor, she's got one more thing, sir.
I have an approval to unfreeze vacant groundskeeper maintenance work for position and field of positions. Second?
Any discussion?
Is, is the position that Mr. Slater said was the reason people got closed?
No.
It's a different position?
Yes.
That's correct.
We took it out of the budget and so this will be an additional expense and we're gonna have to figure out. But we need it. How we're going to cover this.
Could, could you speak a little bit more to, because I know Ruth said that you would potentially need some time away. Is that, I'm assuming for the surgery? Or is that for others?
When they operate on my foot, it would be just a quick return to work.
Okay.
Might give you food.
Any say you?
I think Ruth may have been referring more to my saying
Okay.
to my health, but I mean, I've gone through some serious health issues in the past, you know, in two months. I took no vacation time or personal time in twenty-one-four. We have way more work than we do. People in some cases. Some of the my staff could use on some items that I do for training so that they can do it. The worst, the worst thing we have is the volume of grass that we both our city properties. They're pretty much all MoDOT stuff. That takes those three of us, that takes two of the three of us. And they're on a mower basically from late March to first of November.
So I was curious if you wanted to speak towards, because we discussed this during the budgeting so that way we could get the budget, figure out a plan for the year. And then I know we had discussed bringing a position on in the spring. So I was just curious if you want to speak to what has maybe changed between when we discussed it during the budget discussions to now as to why we want to hire it now versus our original plan to hire in the spring?
I can address that. He didn't, he is not the one who is recommending this. We are.
The Personnel Committee?
What, yes. What did, what, you went to the hospital during the first storm, didn't you?
Yeah.
The big storm, yeah, the big storm. Why'd you go to the hospital, sir? For.
To disco the closer.
Yeah, well, yeah, this is, this is not a place to, to bring it out, et cetera, et cetera. But there are other factors involved other than him bringing it up. It's just pretty.
Well, then we could have the Personnel Committee maybe, because I just haven't heard any of this since I, yeah. Yeah. Worth talking about.
So Mr. Kronk said they'll start probably mowing grass first part of April, end of March, first of April. This is January. So we, if we want to get somebody on board, we need to freeze a position. We need to advertise to get somebody on board. Apparently there has been nobody applying. Anybody searching before, before we froze this position? So it looks like we need to look harder and see if we can get somebody on board. And it's gonna take time.
Well, this be a temporary position or a permanent position?
Full-time position, just like what I was.
Not, not full-time versus part-time. Permanent versus seasonal slash temporary.
Permanent.
Permanent.
Permanent. So I'm just, I'm, I'm curious then what the change is from, like, why, why did we not put this into the original budget when we were planning the budget? Because that was just what, a couple of months ago?
Mr. Kronk gave it up so we could balance or get closer to balance the budget.
Well, then the back.
It's not feasible.
The, okay, well, the budget isn't balanced if we just push something off and erase it from the budget and then in January just put it back in. So I just don't understand why we didn't discuss it during the budget discussion. And when the, we were talking about solutions, possibly temporary employees, seasonal employees.
We can keep, as what happened with the 2024 budget, you can keep talking about it until April like we did for 2024 budget. Or we can get it done. It's a plan and things have things come up that you're not counting on and you have to adjust the budget.
So what, what are the things that came up that we were planning on?
The storm.
Is it, is it the storm, is that what?
Basically two people trying to clear this whole city.
Okay, so that, that's my question then, is it the, which storm that then changed?
Things happen, things happen. Now we have to adjust.
I make a motion that we hire a.
The motion was already made.
I'm not a ground speaker, maybe this works.
It was already seconded.
Already seconded?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in discussion right now.
I made it, she seconded it.
Well, I would, I would like to further discuss what we had originally discussed of having a seasonal employee. We talked about doing something like similar to what the example I gave was moving companies, they hire employees during the busy season, often hiring college students, high school students, people who need extra income rather than putting a full-time salary position that includes benefits and is here all season long when what we were discussing during the budget discussion was that he mainly needs this extra position for when we are mowing grass, which is not the entire year.
Was that before or after the move? I mean, why are we going? We got a first and second, we'll get lost now.
We have a first and a second, and right, essentially we're in discussion.
We're still in discussion.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yes, we do. We're in discussion. That's been my concern about those things came up. We got a storm and this is just January and we don't know what's coming on down the line. They keep saying February is the most snowiest, has the most snow usually. And everything else, and that there's other projects besides just mowing that, the things that come up that they could need an extra hand. And sometimes, and then I get concerned, I mean, it can be, but who's going to ensure them that sometimes has to be the, the, you know, college kids about personally, I'm kind of nervous about young people that are up on that hill. You know, where there's, and so forth, so that's a concern.
They don't necessarily have to be college kids, it would just be a difference of a temporary seasonal employee versus a full-time, all-year-round permanent employee. Age is not relevant.
There is. So if I may add, it, it, it's not just the mowing. I mean, it, it if you read the report, it's not that, yeah, I'll see how it's.
Okay, we got a motion.
Let's read to the staffing and the amount of, it was broken down to the amount of time.
The McGrath report.
McGrath report that each, my setup and the other individuals, they percentage-wise, uncertain things. The you know, regardless of my health, at some point, I'm, I'm fifty-eight. I'd probably be here till retirement age, but what we do is so multifaceted that you could have, if, if you, if the city was looking at hiring, hiring an assistant public works director or a public works director, you would be hard pressed to find someone that turned in a resume that covered everything we do. Chunks of stuff, yeah, absolutely. But to cover everything, no. And I worked here, I'm a quick learner and I came in with a lot of knowledge of some of the things that we do. But myself, also, I didn't know everything. I'd never done any planning, zoning, those sorts of things. So it takes somebody numerous years to be able to respond, reply and answer any call or request or paperwork any call or request or paperwork from, you know, realtors call, zoning stuff, you know, building inspections, process and permits, I go on. We are also, once they break ground for the construction, custom equipment, I'll pretty much be living on that property doing non-stop inspections. Somebody said something about, well, maybe we can also have the county come in and do inspections. You will delay the, that project big time if you rely on the county to come in, because they'll come look inspected when they can and you've got a contractor there. These guys can't do their pieces of the bill till this is inspected and finished and so on and so forth. So I think that's part of it too. Also, if I may add, for five years, I've been asking for additional employees and I don't know, call me a softie or whatever, but there's always kind of, wow, we'll look at next year, we'll look at the budget next year and see if we can get it done. So it's not like I guess what I'm saying is, it's not just the mowing.
Yeah.
It's our volume of work relative to the number of personnel we have. The factor of vacation time for those that take it sick time, you know. It's just overwhelming.
So, so my, my comment would basically just be then that this sounds like information that we knew when we did the budget. And I think it would behoove us in the future to be honest about what we will actually need in the budget rather than trim items just to make it look good and then re-add things in January. Sounds like this is long-term, things that we know, it's not like this is the first time we've ever had a snowstorm, so I mean, when we had the discussion, it seemed like this was a viable option, but if it wasn't, I think that was something that we really need to discuss when we're planning the budget out and not done after the fact. But can't change the past, so.
Can I speak? The budget that we adopted, we're taking 108,793 from savings to make a balance. The 2024 budget, we included 205,464 to make the budget balance. If we put 50,000 in to cover a groundskeeper, maintenance person, that'll bring us up to 158,793 that we take from savings. So that's less than what we did in '24. It's less than what we did in '23, which was 177,526.
It kind of brings, brings up, when will be when, when will be the actuals be completed for '24? Because encumbered carried forward is, 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 is what's budgeted, but it's not what's actually used at the end of the year. So, I mean, that's your point. I'm good.
So
This week.
Along with 1099.
1099 will be priority and then I'll, I'll be here tonight, keeping work on that refund. By the way, I was here Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday, not the whole time, obviously, but quite a few hours.
So by our first meeting
Are you cutting hours during the week?
I'm not. You never get overtime from me. You never get
So by our first meeting in February, we should pass some information about the finals for 2024?
Yes. You, you, you will have the finals for 2024 by Friday.
Sorry, just a quick question on that. So are you, do you, are you working weekends and then maybe cutting hours during the rest of the week?
No.
Because I, I know, I think that your position is not
It's not salary, but I'm not charged overtime.
Yeah, well, I think that we have a, technically, that there's no overtime within your
There is, man, there's overtime. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, if I work 50 hours, you get charged for 40.
Well, I, I don't believe that that is legal for us to not pay you for hours that you are working.
Then I will take the hours off, okay? I, I will.
We just need to make sure because we have, we have to legally pay you for any hours that any employee is working for the city.
I agree. We need to legally pay hours that employees are actually working.
Yes, 100%.
Designer? What, what I'm saying, what I'm concerned about is that the assistant public works that we hired last year, that I think we don't want him to burn out. We need to keep him because he came with a lot, you know, a lot of experience or kind of knowledge from his last position. And so that's my concern too, that they're all gonna, you know, overwhelming or they're still learning on the job or what they want here, you know, to work with now, but that's, that was one of my concerns that about the, you know, that we were cutting everything else and that, and when I found out basically they were trying to do this whole city, two of them. And Corey does not, he lives in Lexington, Missouri.
So if I may have done, you know, very strong on myself.
Well, I got a motion on the floor. Anybody else got anything to say?
One, one last thing. I'm, I'm not opposed to unfreezing a position, especially, especially this, the works there. It, it, I'm getting whiplash from the narratives of November, December into, into January of this position was, was frozen to make the budget balance and then switch back very first meeting in, in, in January, second meeting, sorry. And, and saying that they're, they're gonna do it. It, it, it's just the, it's just the narrative of it. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Well, we didn't balance the budget without using savings to balance it, so we're still in the same boat.
Okay.
Call roll?
I'm calling the, vote on the motion. Well, read the motion.
A motion to approve, to unfreeze the vacant groundskeeper maintenance floor proposition and field of position.
Okay. Call the roll.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Mesmer.
Yes.
Jacoby.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langmuth.
Yes.
Olson.
No.
Okay, all, all, get the finance. Walter Moon and Mesmer from finance.
We have one account that was filed. It's, do you have this?
He's got another sheet, but not that one.
Thank you.
All of our CDs that we used to have. Do you think this?
I've got it right here.
Um, are no longer in CDs, but they have been moved to an advisor account. And this is the reconciliation, what you have in front of you. So the top line dated 9/2022 with an asterisk. When that CD matured, it was put into the central investment account activity, the second thing. It's a folded label. So then, when the 54,000 matured, it went down on 11/22 and was deposited in that central investment account activity. Then on 7/23/24, when that 2/29 matured, if you look down on 7/23/24, you'll see 230,500. But then for some reason, they took a thousand out and put it into our general banking account. So we had, this is all sewer fund, by the way, investments. So at the top in the block where it says total and versus at the bottom, the total. And then you'll see a return on investment and the rate of return. That rate of return does not include that thousand dollars that for some reason got deposited to the general account. On the backside, you will see the three investments that are in that investment account and when those are due. So what the bank does is sell our money to the highest bidder, whoever needs it. Mr. Slater, do you want to add?
That's That's just, what they've done is, and the board agreed to do this and obviously, I was on the board in 9/2022 and 11/22/22, when these CDs matured, we approved to renew, re-up them. They, they weren't, they were rolled into these accounts. And, and that's an agreement the board came in, I remember signing up for this account and so every time we thought we were renewing a CD, it was actually just rolled into the accounts. So this board will never, ever approve the CD again, so we keep this advisor group, because when it matures, they decide where to put it and what return. And it's part of central bank where we have our money. So, and we could, we could liquidate this, this at maturity of these CDs. Okay, so now, if you look at that back page where you have the the top 10 CDs, those are the things that we could actually pull something out if we would like. But if we don't do it, the board won't approve, we put the money back into the CD, they'll, they'll do that for us.
So we have investments.
We have investments and they're insured and it's, and we'll ask, we'll ask our auditor what, because if you look at this, the balance sheet that we have and we generate for years shows three CDs. And we don't have those three CDs. We have an investment advisors group that's supposed to be on your balance sheet. And when the auditors come in here, they're gonna get just more questions we gotta ask them, because any auditor who has confirmed their CDs, these obviously were not confirmed. They swing this. And the only reason we know this is because I want to make sure we have an exact balance for the end of the year.
Let me, let me clarify so that I understand.
Yeah.
So as of 2022, these were moved from, did we have them in CDs before or were they, it was just moving money?
Those top two were in 2022.
Okay, and they were in CDs?
In the bank.
And, and then they got moved to investment accounts?
Yeah, they, it's called a sweep based on investment too.
Okay, and so are, what's the biggest difference between these investment accounts versus a CD? Is it not a guaranteed rate of return? Is that the, the bigger difference?
What they do is they, it's called secondary market. They'll be able to pool those with other ones and hopefully get larger returns of what we get as an individual.
Okay.
For instance, sir, when you put that, when, if you look at the back page, the last entry at 250,000 in the Morgan Stanley bank, that's not the only CD money that went to Morgan Stanley. They probably put three, four, five million dollars and sent it out there, but our portion is at 250,000.
So, so realistically, this is a, a probably higher risk investment than a CD?
I don't think it's a higher risk, it's a higher return.
Okay.
The, the risk is, if it goes above 250,000, it's not insured. But these are insured and they're not gonna go out and buy from some company that's, that's wouldn't insure your investment.
Okay.
That, here, here's the one thing that, and I'll have to verify this too. In a bank, if yours, the three CDs we had before, the bank had to pledge assets against those CDs in, in securities like municipal bonds or federal, federal T-bonds or something like that, T-bills. So that if that bank went under, we would get those receipts. That's probably not the situation here because these are no longer the bank investments. These are the central bank advisors. So is there a risk? Yeah, there, there would be, but, but it's a, these are insured just like normal FDIC bank insurance would be for the folks.
Mr. Moss? Did we make the decision to move those?
As a board, yes. I don't know the exact date. We gotta go back to the minutes, but it'd be sometime in 2022.
Because I know, I know we've been voting on CDs and interest and the banks and everything and it's been coming back. We, we put it in the CD, we rolled it over at the bank and this is the interest we're gonna get. Now all of a sudden, we're in like Edward Jones, that company. And how did we get to Edward Jones?
Well, the, the board decided to agree that with this central bank investment advisors.
When?
I'd like to look that up.
He said sometime in '22.
There was a person named Chris.
Chris, yeah.
At Central Bank. Bank. That was able to find greater return on our money than the standard CD because CD rates were so low. And so apparently the bank can charge higher rates for these other banks to borrow, or other places to borrow money from them. So we get a greater rate of return.
So are we wanting to keep them in an investors account then, so that we can get a greater rate of return or do we want
I don't know how safe it is, that's
But, but maybe there's a reason, I would like to keep them in there, honestly.
Usually, you know, an investment account does yield a lot more than a CD.
Right, right. And, and if you look, if you look at that page one, you'll see some fluctuation. I sum that up quickly by putting the interest, but there's also a change in value. And if I buy a 200,000 CD, when I sell that, it's a 200,000 CD. But let's say I cut that at 4%, all of a sudden the interest rates go down to 2%. Then all of a sudden that CD is worth a lot more than 200,000 because I'm getting 4% and somebody else wants a chunk of that, say, be willing to pay me 210,000 or whatever. So that's your market valuation and that's included with the interest on this charges. We didn't overcomplicate things. Got a copy of every statement if you might want to see the details and, and so that, that's what you got. And so basically what we did, we, we moved 21,000 into our income account to put this, when we put the, when we got rid of the CDs and created the investor, investment account which bounced to our statement, we have 21,419.51 that we just where we'll book as interest because of this and
So don't you know where these, these monies reside when we thought they were all CDs?
That's a, that's a problem. And that goes back to, I mean, Matthew obviously had that last one, but George Fox was the, the city clerk too. So CDs we thought we rolled in '22 were not CD, they were not rolled. They were rolled into this investment account, not into CDs.
Now, with these, with these investor accounts, they're in control of the account.
Yes.
You are not.
Right.
CD accounts, we are in control.
We can pull that CD out anytime.
We don't have a CD. We got an investor account.
But, but when that CD matures, with this
You mean the investor account when that matures? Not the CD, because we don't have no CDs no more.
Correct, but on 7/31/25, we can go pull that 229,000 out.
Well, you can pull your CD out now. There's a penalty.
Right.
There's a penalty for early withdrawal, but you can pull that out now. You are in charge of your CDs.
We'll see if that's not the situation here.
They're in charge of your money if it's an investor account.
Yeah, I, I've asked more information. They, they're, they're lining a bunch of stuff to give me because this is new. Like I said, I just want to make sure our balance is in the low.
Every bank has those people. Every bank has those people where we'll walk you down here, let you talk to these people. This is the easy way to make money. We pay higher interest rates on your money down here at this group. It's not a CD, it's an investment account.
And they're buying CDs with it, but yes.
No, your CD is gone. You're putting your money in there. You have no control over it. They control it. You know, I mean, I, it's up to you, but
No, it's up to the board.
Yeah.
I have a question on, on the back page. So just as an example, I looked at the very first entry. It looks like 200,000 was invested with Nekwet National Bank, Green Bay on 10/28/22.
Correct.
And, and the terms are listed off the right, 4% on that amount due 3/28/24. Then I go down to the 3/28/24, I see where that money comes back, 200,000, just straight up 200,000. And then I go look on the opposite side that details all the changes in value. I don't see that 4%. What do the terms mean if they don't actually make it back into the investment account?
Well, if you also look at two, you'll see that 54,000, the second one down, it's now all of a sudden turned into a 65,000 one. So they will take the money, there'll, there'll be some
That's a different one. That's
But apparently it was close to be in 65,000.
They took the, an extra 11,000. That was probably the interest earned.
Where, where can we get those interest deposits just right as well?
In savings, they're right here.
Yeah. I'm a data kind of person, so.
Yeah.
Any additional data I can get would actually be helpful.
Please, our round one, try to drop by or we can just make copies of some.
So I, I mean, I guess ultimately, is there a question of how this happened?
No, the board approved it. The board approved it, the board obviously approved it for Chris Champ's recommendation.
Okay, so maybe it was the, we didn't really fully understand that we were moving them out of CDs.
No, we can.
Can the minutes be provided from that meeting? We can, we can search for those, yes.
Yeah.
I remember something.
Search.
Okay, so basically, we, there was a vote made, not we, it's still there, but you know, at the time, a vote was made to move these to a different type of investment account, but then, as far as our kind of phrasing goes, we just kept calling them CDs.
Correct.
And so there's just been some misinformation from the board on what was actually, where these were actually held.
Correct.
Okay, I understand a little bit better, I understand nothing.
No, we just want to make sure the board sees solid financial statements.
Yeah, no, I agree one hundred percent, yeah, yeah. All right, well then, I guess, I guess our next step is on when these mature, we just need to figure out if we want them to stay in these types of accounts or move them to CDs.
Do that, that's.
Thank you.
Other questions on this? And again, statements are available in office, you want to see them, or copy them, send.
Alderwood and Messmer, got anything else?
That's it.
Anybody else got any questions?
Actually, real quick, so I just, you know, mine dated, I looked at the email just so I could check, and yeah, I did see it, and I actually do remember reading it. So I just wanted to confirm, just because I'm pretty sure it's a typo, but just making sure that I understand. It says that those operating a service are exempt from paying the gross receipts tax except for business done outside the city. I think that is gross receipts tax except for business done, so I guess, is that right?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, now I'm confusing myself.
And then it lists the businesses, too.
The types of businesses, okay, and then my question was on that, was when we ask a business for their business license, it just says right there, gross receipts.
Yes.
And then it has the calculation there for them to basically fill it in themselves.
Correct.
So is it on the business to understand if they're a service business that they don't need to put that in? Is that our job to make sure that they understand, dependent on the type of business that they are, what gross receipts that they need to be putting in? Just because for me, when I received that, I just kind of saw gross receipts, okay, so I guess I need to just fill this in. And then for further looking up the ordinances is when I realized, oh, well, actually, as a service business, with me not doing weddings in Pleasant Valley, then I don't have to pay the gross receipts for those weddings of incoming made outside of the city. So I just wanted to have clarification as to when a business fills out their business license, how is it that they are, how is it that they know what, how much they're supposed to be paying?
We do send a letter, but that's a good question.
Okay.
We'll have to be back to you on that.
Okay, yeah, because I want to make sure that with service businesses and other, because there's, there's some businesses that do a combination of services and, you know, sales, and, or some do services with Pleasant Valley and then some services outside Pleasant Valley, that they fully understand what it is that they owe the city of Pleasant Valley, that they're not overpaying or underpaying on their business licenses.
Matthew, would you like to elaborate on that?
Well, I would, I would say initially, it's up to the business, yes, because you are provided that information, but on the back end of it, it is whoever's processing it in the administration office to make sure it's correct as well.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so I, from my previous business license from when I first joined the board, I know that I am putting the gross receipts for what I have made and I paid on that because I wasn't aware, it doesn't serve as business, but again, if it's on the business to look into the ordinances, that's, I mean, if that's the way that they want to handle it, that's fine, and if they overpay, I guess it's just, they overpaid, well.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that we aren't, especially if it's misleading, if on the paper it just says, put in your gross receipts, okay, well, that's what I'm supposed to do, so that's what I'm going to put in, and they're trying to follow the rules, that if it's misleading to businesses, that don't need to be paying as much as they are. That's all, that's the only kind of little statement there I wanted to make on that.
Okay, got anything else? Okay, Mr. Chapman, let's go to the bills.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to read Council Bill thirty-five seventy-seven?
Please do.
An ordinance amending the city's loss prevention manual. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to ask for a motion in a second to pass Council Bill thirty-five seventy-seven on the first and place it on the second?
Yes.
Second?
Any discussion?
The following statement needs to be changed from the sixth to the twenty-first. After section three.
Oh. Do I have a second? Any other discussion? Mr. Chapman, call the roll, please.
Gallagher.
Yes.
As amended. Call roll, as amended, I changed in the day.
Mess, Messmer.
Yes.
Jacoby.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langman.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to read Council Bill thirty-five seventy-seven?
Yes, please do.
An ordinance amending the city's loss prevention manual. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to ask for a motion in a second to pass Council Bill thirty-five seventy-seven as ordered as thirty-five seventy-eight?
Yes. Any discussion? Mr. Chapman, call the roll.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Messmer.
Yes.
Jacoby.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langman.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Is there any old business? Is there any new business?
I do re-adjourn.
Mr. Chapman, call the roll.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Messmer.
Yes.
Jacoby.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes, sir.
Langman.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Well, here, good night.
You're good, got plenty of cards now, it's full of cards.